PM, I would like to call the Tiffin City Council Meeting of August 1st, 2022, to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Jones.
Please follow me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we do not intend to be, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Leopard?
Here.
Perry?
Here.
Spar?
Here.
Thacker?
Here.
Wilkins?
Here.
Let the record show that six of six council members are present. Minutes, hopefully everyone has had a chance to review them. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections, or questions? Okay, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Committee reports. Finance committee, anyone from the finance committee have a report?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long community planning, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and labor relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and public property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone, or, excuse me, the street sidewalks and sewers, anyone from that committee?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a report.
That's okay, great.
Street sidewalk and sewer committee meeting was held July 21st, 2022, at 4:30 PM in the Marquise Committee Room. Attending were committee members Steve Leopard, Ken Jones, and Dan Perry, along with city engineer Matt Watson, Director of Law Brent Howard, city administrator Dale Thornton, Mayor Don Yanantuno, and Danny Yanantuno. Leopard called the meeting to order and stated that the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the mayor's request for legislation 22-24, Ohio Public Works grant for street resurfacing, and any other business presented. Engineer Watson informed the committee that the 2023 application for this grant is due on September 23rd, 2022, with the review date of October 4th, 2022. City engineer Watson suggests that we request a 0% loan in the amount of $500,000 for the resurfacing of Ann Street from Circular to Main, East Davis Street from Sandusky to Elwood, Elm Avenue north of Seneca, Fourth Avenue, Mall Road, Fourth Avenue, Mall Road to Park Avenue, Olive Greenfield Street, Olive Industrial Avenue, River Road North, north of the Tiffin Developmental Center, Sycamore Street, Ella to Monroe, and Olive Westwood Drive. The resurfacing is estimated to be $650,000 and will be paid with $150,000 from the Road and Bridge Levy Fund and $500,000 from the OPWC Pavement Repair Program. The $500,000 grant would be repaid over an eight-year span, but the city engineer suggests that we pay the loan off in five. Due to increased costs, increased costs, the Ella Street Bridge project will cost $1 million more than anticipated. $300,000 was cut from the 2023 street paving, so the bridge would be paid for without borrowing any money. The OPW grant will restore the dollars that were pulled from the 2023 street paving to ensure the Ella Street Bridge project would be paid for without funding. The city plans to spend $1.25 million paving city streets in 2023. This includes $600,000 in ODOT urban paving grant funds. Councilmember Perry introduced a motion to have the Director of Law prepare legislation authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission revolving loan fund for street resurfacing in 2023 and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. Councilman Jones seconded the motion, and the motion passed by a 3-0 vote. The committee had discussion concerning sidewalks after receiving an email from an area resident. City engineer Watson informed the committee that the Tiffin sidewalk program was active beginning in 2001 through 2011, and again in 2015 and 2017. Committee was provided with sidewalk program estimated timeline that was developed in 2013 for our review and explanation. Engineer Watson believes that this program may have ended due to budget and staffing, but he assured us that if the city desires to return to this program, his department is staffed adequately to accept the challenge. Engineer Watson would suggest, in the future, the sidewalk program follow two years behind street paving. The city is 70% compliant with ADA standards, and only 51% of the city actually has sidewalks. Committee took no action, but wishes the property owners would maintain sidewalks as required by the codified ordinances. No further business, committee adjourned at 5:16 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Leopard? Okay, thank you very much. Economic development and downtown planning, anyone from that committee have a report?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee of the hold, so they wouldn't see the need for a committee hold meeting at this time. Okay, seeing none, we are now under reports of the officers. Your Honor, Mayor Don Yanantuno.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually have my first big report this evening, so bear with me. I've been on the job almost two weeks now, and I have been very busy and loving it. I was asked what I would do in my first 100 days by Councilmember Wilkins, and so here's my response to that so far. Nick has been great on scheduling me. I have met with all departments and available personnel this week, and even drove a Bobcat, which now has 1,700 bikes on it now, so, pretty exciting. But Nick did not get me pictured in there, but I really was driving it. I have met with TSEP CEO Aaron Mont, all three commissioners, county commissioners, Bryce Riggs, and his staff at the Chamber and Visitors Bureau, and also met with the new Tiffin City School Superintendent Ben Richards. I also went out to the Sheriff's Department for their drone presentation to the area alliance clubs with Project Lifesaver. I stopped in to the Seneca County Fair and visited the Bridges Academy with their open house. I also had the privilege of swearing in firefighters in their new positions and witnessing the bestowing of three medals of honor. Channel 13 also covered their story the next day. I was spending the day with the city administrator on Friday in Finley at the Ohio Municipal League Conference. Lots to learn and good networking opportunities for myself, so I thought that would be a good idea. None of this includes the extensive internal meetings I've attended or the never-ending emails to answer. It is unbelievable the number of emails on this job. I still plan to visit the area businesses, beginning with downtown. I've asked Nick to carve out some afternoon timeframes in the near future for me to start doing that. As we have a very new crew on city council, I still hope to make calls before the council meetings to answer your questions, because I know you'll have questions, and I'll try to help you with that. And then for upcoming events, J. Kyle is the Thursday Night Tunes artist performing at the East Green Amphitheater Thursday evening. He and his band Bigfoot's Brother gave a great performance during our Fourth of July celebration. Also on the East Green, the next performer for the 2022 concert series is the RTs at 8:00 PM Saturday. Saturday morning, visit downtown Tiffin for yoga on the East Green at 9:00 AM, and the Tiffin-Seneca Farmers Market will be on Washington Street also. Next week, Soul Pilot returns for Thursday Night Tunes with the annual band bash taking place on August 18th, which is, that's all the area school bands will be playing, which is the same night as the next Thursday, Third Thursday in downtown Tiffin. And as a reminder, the last day for the city poll is August 14th. And that is my report.
Questions for the mayor? Okay, thank you. Clerk of Council Anne Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Director of Law Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple items. In your packet is Resolution 22-23, and that resolution authorizes the city's participation in Region 17 of the governance for some of the opioid settlement funds that are being distributed in the state. The one item that is really new that you could focus on and that you may have reviewed are the bylaws of Region 17. You may recall that last year, the city received notice of the opioid settlement, and you approved a memorandum of understanding that set forth various facts related to the participation of the settlement. That is still the kind of guiding document for all political subdivisions in the state of Ohio. And one of the steps that you need to take is to pass this resolution that approves your participation in Region 17. The state is made up of various regions, and that is used to participate in funding requests for opioid abatement strategies. And you can see that that's also a document that's in your packet. It was also, I think, provided to you last year. Keying in on the bylaws that were the recent document that was created, that was created by eight counties, one of which is Seneca County. And the eight counties have sent representatives to create a structured bylaws, and I believe that all the regions have considered something similar. And what it does is, and if you look at the document, there's a few highlights. Each of the eight members have representatives, each of the counties have representatives on the region board. So you will work with the other political subdivisions of Seneca County to have representatives on the region board. The region board 17 will appoint one member to the statewide foundation board. And that's important, because ultimately, this foundation board will receive requests for funding. And that's the one section I also want, want to make sure that you key in on, and it's Article 11, funding requests. And the funding requests are supposed to be submitted to the county representative. So as a city, if we come up with projects, programs that we believe qualify for funding regarding the opioid crisis, then we submit those to our county representative to go through Region 17, to then eventually go to the State of Ohio Foundation, is called, for funding for our program. I know this sounds like a, kind of a bureaucratic method process, and it is, but it's designed so that there is representation throughout the state, that there is a structure to receive these funding requests. And so it's something that we should all be thinking about, and I believe, you know, certain members of the city, in particular, the, maybe the mayor's office and the police department, they will be looking at ways that we could help our community with the funding that is available. But your step in the process initially is to approve this resolution, because all the political subdivisions within Region 17 need to do that. The next meeting of Region 17 is August 5th, later this week. They would like to have these resolutions approved as soon as possible. My recommendation is that you do approve it. I don't think that there's anything in the bylaw structure that unfairly treats the city of Tiffin differently than any other political subdivision. It just creates that structure, that mechanism, for us to have representation on the region, and then ultimately, representation at the statewide foundation, and as again, for the funding requests that will be produced locally and then through the process. So are there any questions? I know you had an opportunity before the meeting to receive and to review the resolution. Again, the only item that really is new is the bylaws, the memorandum of understanding, the opioid strategies, abatement strategies. Those are things that you had access to before, and you probably have reviewed. It's just the bylaws are really the only new document. Are there any questions about the bylaws or the structure that is being created?
Questions for the law director?
The only other item that I have is that for the new council members, I will be sending you an orientation memo, which will lay out some of the procedures that are followed by council, some of the applicable laws. The one thing that I do want to bring to your attention is that you have now a short timeframe to file a financial disclosure statement. We all, as political sub, or, public officials, we are subject to the financial disclosure laws of the state of Ohio, the ethics laws. And so we have that obligation annually. And as somebody who is appointed, you have a short timeframe, and I think he probably remembers, what is it, 15 days?
I think it's 15, yeah.
So it's within 15 days of your appointment. You can do it online. I'll be more than happy to help you. I'm going to be out of town here in the next week or so. But if you go online, you should be able to, under Ohio Ethics Commission, I'll send you the link later this evening. I want to make sure that you're aware of this, because there are fines if you don't file it timely. I'm not sure that you would otherwise know unless somebody locally might tell you. And it's something that you have to do, we all have to do on an annual basis. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. But I'll make sure that you get information. If you make sure that you give me your email addresses, and you'll have that. That concludes my report. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions for the law director?
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now under written communications.
Thank you. We have mayor's request for legislation number 22-26, Traffic Signal Improvement Project for Circular Street and Plitten Avenue.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-26 will be referred to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-27, Appointment to Civil Service Commission, Jack Boer.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-27 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-28, Appointment to Planning Commission, Randy Schwartz.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-28 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F-22-30, to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate funds into the police capital budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F-22-30 will be held on file in the clerk's office as Ordinance 22-69 is prepared for tonight's evening, for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F-22-31, to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate additional funds into the council professional services budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F-22-31 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 22-70 is prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F-22-32, to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate additional funds into the sewer construction budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation F-22-32 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 22-77, 71, excuse me, is prepared for tonight's meeting.
And then we have notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a D-5 permit, a new D-5 permit for Excoray Two Incorporated Doing Businesses Excoray Mexican Restaurant.
This request will be referred to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
And then we have the self-nomination of Kevin Reisner for Third Ward Councilmember, dated July 27th, 2022.
This will be held on file in the clerk's office.
And that concludes the written communications.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Madam President. The Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee has conferred, and we approve the Excorret Division of Liquor Control license. And we ask that the clerk of council file this with the Liquor Control Board, and we do not request a hearing.
Thank you. Anything else for written communications? Okay, we are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Okay. We are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Seeing none, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 22-22, introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission OPWC revolving loan program for street resurfacing in 2023 to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-22.
Resolution number 22-23, introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution approving the city of Tiffin's participation in Region 17 governance structure under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-23, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you. I would ask for suspension of city council's three-reading rule and passage of Resolution number 22-23.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend Resolution 22-23. Is there a second, Councilman Perry?
A second, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second to suspend Resolution 22-23. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. I know we've discussed this in length in the committee, the whole meeting, and I think the people at home, on TV, or their cell phones don't come in till 7:00 PM. It'd be nice if someone would explain the need for suspending the three-reading rule.
So I think this is the explanation, actually, the law director gave in his committee report, or, excuse me, his report of the officers. So I don't want to have him go through that all again, as that was with it. But essentially, our step in the process of this is to approve this resolution, ideally before the next meeting, which is held on 8/5 for the, please?
Region 17.
The Region 17 meeting, thank you. So that's why we're asking for suspension this evening. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes. I gotta get used to those names.
Suspension passes with a vote of 6 to 0. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
And Wilkins?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 6 to 0. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
And Wilkins?
Yes.
Resolution 22-23 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 22-62, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $1,000 into the Director of Communications budget for photography work for the city of Tiffin website.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 22-62, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you. I would ask for passage of Ordinance number 22-62.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Ordinance 22-62. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I said yes.
There's a motion and a second for passage of Ordinance 22-62. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call a vote on the passage, please.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-62 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 22-69, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate a total of $55,000 into the police capital budget.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 22-69, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask for suspension of city council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance number 22-69.
Thank you. There is a motion to suspend council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance 22-69. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. This is new to us and for the residents who are in the audience and at home. This $55,000 is going, like $45,000 is going to Police Vehicle Capital Budget, $10,000 grant from the Tiffin Community Foundation for body worn, worn cameras. I answer my own question.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-69 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 22-70, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $500 into the Council Professional Services Budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-70.
Ordinance number 22-71, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $48,500 into the Sewer Construction Budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-71. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask for suspension of City Council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance number 22-71.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend the three reading rule for ordinance 22-71. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I have a second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I see this 48.5 M goes into some manhole on Second Avenue. I can't tell you how many manholes are in, but what area is this manhole?
It's more than one.
Yes, Director of Finance, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I talked to Brandon Burner this week and it's, it's all of the manholes in that area and it's a rehab, hopefully. That's why he wants us to suspend it so he can get started on stabilizing those so that we can repair rather than replace because it would probably be twice as much the cost if we had to replace them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-71 passes with a vote of six to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Madam President.
Thank you. We are now under other business. So during this time, I'd like to discuss the appointment of the Third Ward Council Member and to follow the process that was approved by council during our special meeting that took place on 7/25. We will at this time allow for the candidate, which I believe we just have one, come to the podium and express their interest to council. And after that, we will allow council to ask any questions. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me okay? Madam Mayor, Madam President and council members, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude for your consideration and continuing the great work Mayor Antuno has already begun in Ward Three. My decision to offer myself for this seat involved a lot of soul searching and the valued input from countless people. I'd especially like to thank everyone who has encouraged me to turn my ambition into action, especially my family, friends, neighbors and those in this city government, past and present. You all inspire us very much. I grew up about a mile southwest of the Tiffin city limits, attending St. Joseph Elementary and Hopalouden High School. Then I earned my associate's in business at Terra State Community College and my bachelor's in business management at Indiana State, Indiana Institute of Technology, all while working full-time. Since then, I completed many postgraduate classes at Tiffin University. From 2012 to 2018, I gained experience at several large international organizations living out of state, but ultimately concluded that Tiffin is where I really wanted to be. In my final year of while living in Washington, the Washington DC area, I was a full-time contractor at the administrative office of the US Courts where I was granted a public trust security clearance. Being involved in government functionality sparked an immense sense of civic satisfaction as it is indeed for the greater good. During those times, I continued to contemplate the words of advice from a mentor I had once worked with here in town. He owned a pizza business and I worked there while I was a student. And when I gave my notice that I was departing the job and leaving for my next opportunity, he said, "Don't forget where you came from." After returning to Tiffin in 2019 while continuing to work full-time at ICP, I also worked part-time at the 2020 Census to help ensure all residents of our area were included in the National Count, also passing a federal background check for that position. I have served on condominium boards while of state and regularly serve as a precinct election officer and volunteer quite often for various organizations. It goes without saying, we all deeply care about this great community. I think it's about, it's an important responsibility of every council member to have a thorough understanding of the area which they represent, especially the feelings of the constituents who live and work there. As each member casts their vote on important issues, they must confidently vote from their heart. As I speak to folks around town, the community certainly understands their elected representation, do disagree sometimes because everyone has their own bias. The important part is how we respectfully communicate our point of view while we attentively listen to each other. After all, healthy debate fights the threat of groupthink. Differing opinions can actually spawn creativity. My work ethic emphasizes organizational success by effective problem solving and project management through effective, fair leadership and fiscal responsibility. I humbly offer these to apply these values to this council. As I have been following past city council meetings, rest assured, I will hit the ground running as an effective member and share the vision of Tiffin's success well into the future. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. To follow process, I'd like to go through, to ensure that if any council member has questions, that we address them and go through them. So, and starting of order of roll call, Councilmember Jones, you have any questions? Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, Mr. Reese, appreciate you putting your resume in. And I like to start of your, well, if I do need a resume, I think I'll call on you. I'm starting off on the front thing. Bachelor of Business Administration, I followed that at the tail end. It really caught my eye. You are a member of the, where is it, Year Eight Citizen Police Academy. That's a big plus in mine and pole worker, et cetera, et cetera. But in between, I guess, operating systems, security and networking, senior cloud, I don't know what that is. We'll come back to that one. You can talk to me in layman's terms on that. Virtualization and storage. Won't you just touch on those two for me? What is a senior cloud project manager?
This is a, the cloud is a, every company, every organization has their IT systems on either on-premise or in the cloud. The servers, the infrastructure, it's either inside the buildings of the organization or it goes out through the internet connection and then it's managed and hosted by a hosting company. And usually that's either out in Virginia, Columbus, there's major places where there are data center areas. So Loudoun County is a big one in Virginia. And that's while I was working out there, I was, I was in that area.
Okay. And then next one of these big words to me, virtualization and storage integration engineer. What is that in layman's terms?
Okay, virtualization is the process of taking a file server in the IT world and basically turning it into a set of files that act like a server. And then those can run, those can coexist on one piece of hardware. So your computer at home likely has virtualization technology built in.
Okay. Okay, I see I'm not going to stump you, so that's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Leopard.
Thank you. What, what brings the most pride to you when you say Tiffin, Ohio?
Oh, a number of things. This, this is a community that is, it's, it's quiet, it's, it has all, a lot of the elements of, that you can catch in larger cities, but they're here. Probably the one thing that kind of put me over the edge to move back was when I heard we got a Chipotle.
So are you available at 11 o'clock at night when I have problems with Microsoft?
Correct answer. Correct answer.
Any other questions, Councilman Leopard?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. Just one question. What pizza place did you work for and who's the owner at the time?
Oh, it was Larry Elker.
Oh, that's right. Okay. That's what I kind of figured, so. Yeah, just thank you for reading over your resume and stuff. It's impressive. So thank you for coming for the seat and appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Thacker, you're next on my list. Do you got a? Yeah, I'm sorry, I think I skipped over you. I'm sorry.
No, I don't really. Congratulations on stepping forward and thanks for doing that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Thacker.
Well, I appreciate Steve's questions. I have kind of the opposite. What, what sort of troubles or what, what sort of parts of Tiffin do you see yourself helping to improve?
Tiffin is on a great progress toward, has a great momentum all over. I see a lot of, every place you look that was five years ago is just on a path to improvement. So my, my opinion is we are on a great path toward improvement. We just don't want to interrupt that path. We don't want to go, go in the wrong direction or slow down. But overall, I see just about every area of the town is, has got some good progress going.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Wilkins.
Kevin, it's good to see you again. We've done some networking through Tiffin University, so it's nice to see you. Just one question for me, since you've been back since 2019, what's the most exciting thing that you feel like has happened in the city of Tiffin since you've come back?
I was excited to see the common area down here, the, the national corner that, that really, I've seen it in a lot of other cities I've been in and when I seen it here, I thought this is great. We're, we're following along, we're doing, doing the right thing and getting, we're, we're not trying to differentiate ourselves too much, but we're, we're, we're trying to follow a good model.
Thank you. No other questions? I'd like to move into the vote at this time. Law Director, if I could ask you, would it be appropriate, as there is only one candidate, to do a yes or no vote versus the calling out by name or should I continue to follow process of the?
I think you should follow process to have a roll call vote.
Okay. Thank you. Clerk of Council, if I could ask you to call the role for the vote of the Third Ward Councilmember?
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Awesome. So that passes with a vote of six to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Reese. Happy to have you on board. One other item of business, now that we have a couple new council members on, is I would like to assign a few outstanding committee assignments. So Councilmember Thacker, I would like to assign you to Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee. I'm sure Steve will be very pleased to get that off of his plate. And then Councilmember Spar, I'd like to assign you to Economic Development and Downtown Planning. Awesome. Thank you. I believe there is one item of business for Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee if you would like to try to schedule a meeting for that.
Sure. Let's see here. I'll pull up my calendar. Is anyone willing to meet Wednesday afternoon at 3:00 PM? Good.
I'm good.
If I need to be there, I cannot. We've already got a 3:00 o'clock meeting.
Okay, so it's for the?
Could you schedule a little earlier, a little later that same day?
Earlier, yes.
Earlier? Okay. How, how early would work for you?
I don't know. It looks like any time from noon on is fine. There's a 3:00 o'clock meeting, so.
Yeah, what about, what about 1:00 PM instead? Would that work?
I gave up golf for a tree commission meeting at 9:30 and I'll run till 11:00. Lunch? Yes, 3:00 PM. I mean, some people share their calendars and I thought I would join in.
Thank you. So 1:00 PM?
1:00 PM.
I think Councilmember Perry has an issue.
Make one work. We need all the minutes.
Yeah.
Have to be after 4:00 for me.
Okay. Could it be at 4:00 or do you mean after 4:00?
I can make 4:00 work, yeah.
4:00? Would 4:00 work now?
I'm out of town at that point.
Okay. Let's try maybe a different day?
Yeah.
It's probably, it's typically easier if you say what works.
Any, any day after, you know, usually after 4:30 will work, just I work until 4:00, so.
Okay. What about the following day, Thursday at 5:00 PM? Would that work?
Not, not this week for me, but unless, unless you'd want to cover.
I'd be happy to be there.
Okay.
I'll work.
Thursday?
Thursday 5.
5, yeah.
I'm good.
And you're welcome to announce it now if you would like.
Okay. I would like to announce a Street Sidewalks and Sewer meeting at 5:00 PM on August 4th. Should I announce the location?
Yep. The location and the purpose.
Should we just meet here? Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay. And City Hall chambers for the purpose of?
Sorry, I'm, no, you're okay. You're okay. To discuss Mayor's requests for legislation number 22-26, Traffic Signal Improvement Project for Circular Street and Clinton Avenue.
Thank you. And any other business?
Perfect.
Got that part.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Law Director.
Yeah, just to, not to put you on the spot, Kevin, but before you can take any official action, you need to have the oath administered to you. I don't know if you had any particular plans for that. We do have the oath ready for you this evening and we could administer the oath, the live streaming with the public if you would like, right now. Is that okay?
Great. Yeah, absolutely. Great, yeah, absolutely. I welcome it.
Why don't you join me? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kevin A. Reeser.
I, Kevin A. Reeser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Tiffin.
And the Charter of the City of Tiffin.
I will in all respects.
I will in all respects.
uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
The general laws of the State of Ohio.
The general laws of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Tiffin.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Tiffin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Third Ward Councilmember.
The duties of Third Ward Councilmember.
Of the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, Ohio.
Of the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, Ohio.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
Awesome, thank you. Is there any other business? Yes, City Administrator?
Just a couple of announcements for council. Traffic Safety Committee met last week. We have been monitoring the Frost Parkway and Market signal for 150 days now. It has been bagged for the last 60 days. The intent is to remove that signal next week, so that signal will be, or this week yet, I'm sorry, be taken out this week. We did receive only two letters regarding it. We've received a lot of positive comments from the public about it, so the intent is to remove that signal later this week. As you all know, finance is relocated into this building. For the general public's awareness, all of the finance offices, to include sewer revenue and our tax office, are now located in this building. So should you come here, we will help you find where we have squirreled them away in the various offices around the building. Some of them are more challenging than the others. The Sewer Revenue Department, however, is right inside the front door, so you should have no problems finding that. However, the tax office is a little more challenging. It's on the second floor, way back in the back, near the rear fire escape, so we'll be happy to escort you to that office and get you back out again, should you need to see them. We are going to be installing a drop box for the convenience of the public at the curb in front of City Hall, so that you can drop off sewer revenue payments and any tax payments directly into that drop box. It should be installed later this week. The pad is already out there waiting for it, and we'll be putting that on that pad later, later this week as well. And then at the next meeting, there will be two organizations that will be coming on the 15th to make short presentation during the mayor's report. One is a company known as Omni Fiber. They are going to be bringing fiber to the City of Tiffin, installing fiber throughout the city. So their representative will be here to talk a little about that project. And then Rumpke, our trash and recycle hauler, is coming to discuss their contract and bring you up to date on our relationship with Rumpke. Thank you.
Questions for the City Administrator? Okay. Is there any other business to come before council? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure if this is business for council, but I thought I would share with the group. I did some after-the-fact homework. We passed ordinance, some number. City Administrator, twice in the past month, explained the $18,000 to the Fire Department, Police Department, City Employee Exercise Equipment. I was walking by the Fire Department one day, went up to a 24-year veteran. I didn't catch the gentleman's name, asked him if I could look at the workout room, just for my benefit. He took me down in the dungeons. I've never been down there, unlocked the door. The equipment is antiquated with a capital A. I'm not a workout person, but he went on to explain a lot of them as single-use motions, and with this new equipment, it would give him more floor space, et cetera, and et cetera. I made the mistake of asking him, instead of $18,000, could we pay every firefighter, police officer, city employees $10 a month and go out to whatever that other exercise place is? Wrong thing to say. He came up with a number of employees at $10 a month for the next 30 years would be a large figure. So I suggested to him that he come back to city council and ask for another $2,000 or $3,000. So that's my update.
Wow, I'm speechless. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks for your help with the budget.
Is there anything else? Okay, seeing none, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.